Good evening, everyone. Before I open the meeting, I just want to remind anyone who has signs to keep them relatively low so they don't block the camera because it's being filmed in the back, please. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving week, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Welcome to a meeting of the 100 and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the 100 and County Democrat, and sent to the clerks of Delaware Township, East Danwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard as shown on the agenda. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Spitzer, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Here.
Dr. Charney?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mr. Nickel?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Nickel, would you like to read our mission statement?
100 and Central is an innovative educational community dedicated to the intellectual, social, and emotional safety and growth of all students. While fostering curiosity and promoting wellness, we aspire to create powerful learning experiences, establish strong partnerships, and serve as contributing members of society.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 24, 2022, meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Abstain.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Abstain.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no correspondence this month, so we will move right into Dr. Moore's superintendent report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. Thank you, Mr. Nickel, for the reading of our mission statement as well. I really enjoy that at our board meetings, and I talked last time about that launching me into a discussion of mission moments. And there's a lot of wonderful stuff to talk about, plenty of mission moments for us. Our staff members are presenting at conferences and publishing articles on their innovative practice. Our campus is alive with really deep conversation about how to focus our post-pandemic efforts on equity and service and personalization as we pursue our mission, create that new strategic framework that we've talked about. Pandemic learning loss has been manageable, and we have good assessments and interventions in place to address it in the four short years that we have with each of our students. Our fall athletics programs competed with incredible distinction this year, and our drama students and staff wrapped up another successful run this weekend with the 1112 play, "The Importance of Being Earnest." We've even learned, and I have good news to share from Governor Murphy, we've even learned that Governor Murphy has determined that he's going to fund our school-based youth services programs in his upcoming budget, at least through the end of 2024. And so that's wonderful news. You recall my concerns about that last month. Wonderful news, as wellness and socialization gaps, we've discussed, are concerning us more even than some of the learning loss that we're facing because those social-emotional gaps are much harder for us to close in the short amount of time that we have with each student. So in everything, this place is, this school, is shaking off the pandemic like dust, you know, like ash, just off of us. We're still achy, you know, we're still worried about the future because I don't know that we know how to not be worried about the future right now. But good lords, what a rewarding and wonderful thing to see and hear, this school being alive through all of the weariness that we're feeling. Still, though, I have to signal a warning about that weariness. Mine, the fatigue of the people around me. In that, you know, the board has given us and our children really bright guiding lights to follow in the policies that you've set on equity and belonging and the goals that you've determined over the past several years. Those goals have been a luxury to us that not all schools have had over the very distressing few years that we've had. They've been guiding lights to us that many schools have not had as we've all sort of fought back what's felt like chronic seasickness over the past few years. Schools that don't have those guiding lights from their boards are worse off for it. Some of them are lost. We're not lost, you know, we're weary, but we're not lost because of the work that you've done here at this table and the work that we've been doing. Now, the weariness that I talk about comes from a lot of difficult situations and a lot of difficult decisions, you know, too many, too many over the past several years. It's terribly difficult for us, as you know, as I've spoken with all of you, it's terribly difficult for us to have limited athletic spectatorship for a day at events a couple of weeks ago. Very difficult decision. I'm sorry, deeply sorry to those who lost from that short period in which we weren't allowing student spectators, but it was necessary. It was necessary for us to get a handle on the extent of the problem that we were facing. We're pleased, we were pleased to be able to lift that restriction so quickly. For tonight, I had to make a really difficult decision to tell our student council representatives that I didn't want to put them on the agenda. We had wonderful celebrations last week for this quarter's staff and student all-stars. We're doing that in an exciting new way. We've talked about that in some committees, but I didn't want to compel anyone to be here to celebrate that tonight. The reason for that is a call that encouraged people from all over the state to come to this meeting tonight and attack the work that we do in fulfillment of those policies that you passed. The work that we do to ensure belonging and equity. I didn't know what students would face if they came here tonight, so I didn't want to compel them to be here. It looks like a bunch of them didn't listen to me, though. Policies that guide our work put us squarely and solidly in favor of equity and belonging. That's our work. These aren't choices for us. These are the policies you've set. They aren't choices for us, and they aren't choices for anyone who works at this school. These aren't choices. These are the policies you've set. We're not looking to take anything from anyone in this work. The work of reaching our equity and belonging goals, though, can never be colorblind. It can never be ignorant of any identity that anybody brings to the table. Our differences make us who we are. I've said that before here. And the lack of respect for differences causes deep wounds. We've seen that. We're not all the same, and thank God for that gift because that's the gift that compels us to do the work that we have to do, the humble work that we have to do, to build bridges to one another. We have differences to cross. So when members of a visiting team call us out for fan behavior that is dehumanizing or demeaning, and it's not the first time that's happened, it's not the first time that's been in the news in my time here at Central. We can't be blind to differences between people. We have to address that in a very strong and deliberate way. And yes, children have made animal noises at opposing teams in the past. I taught history for a long time. This country engaged in something called chattel slavery for hundreds of years. The word chattel shares the same roots as words that describe livestock and property, domesticated animals, dogs and cattle and sheep and goats. That's what chattel slavery means. We can't make animal noises at people. Can't. We have to grow, and we have to change, and things that were acceptable to some can no longer be acceptable to any. By way of an update, by the way, I can share that we've identified students who engaged in that behavior, and our code of conduct, as it guides us in all things, will guide us toward the appropriate responses to that behavior. We're also working with our partner schools in our conference to develop a new set of rules for spectators because we're all concerned about the behavior that we're seeing at athletic events across the entire conference, across the entire state. Our students have been victims of some of that behavior as well. That's one of the ways we embrace the opportunity to grow and change. It's not just punitive, it also becomes something that we can do better with. When students in our Pulse Club hold an event, a drag show, with no sexualization, no breach of our code of conduct, no violation of our policies, when they come together to seek that belonging and that confidence, to express themselves in safety, and information about that event is twisted and demonized and used to attack, when people say that we can't support our students in a project like this because there are pedophiles hiding in our community and we're serving their agenda, their agenda to hurt our kids, I'm sorry, I don't think we're living on the same planet, and I don't think you need to start, I think you need to start talking about your own agenda rather than guessing so much at someone else's.
Guys, quiet down, please.
So I'm almost done. I'm sorry, you're being very patient. I'm left asking, what are people for? And they can't just be for demonizing things. That can't be what a position is about. I'm living in a world in which we are for belonging, and we are suffering from a lack of belonging. We've talked about it a lot. I'm living in a world in which a lack of belonging kills, and in which reckless nastiness and bias of all kinds are complicit in that. And this reckless nastiness, just it needs to stop. Anonymous people hiding in cowardice but calling it patriotism, it needs to stop. Children are learning from it all. Shh. They're learning nastiness. They're learning cowardice, and they're learning that their differences make them wrong instead of wonderful. That's what they're learning, and I'm not going to tolerate or model that any longer. I will not honor the open carry permit for nastiness that folks seem to have ready in their hip pocket these days. A community member left me a voicemail over the past several weeks accusing me of serving an agenda, using kids as pawns to serve an agenda, and then demanded at the end of that voicemail to have a meeting with me, to let me hear all about that. I've gotten many, many supportive communications and emails from folks, many, but I also get those unsupportive emails that ask me how I sleep at night and then end with words, "I look forward to your reply, Dr. Moore." I'm too busy, too focused, and too weary to entertain that, to be dragged into that. If folks step up to this microphone and talk about building a bridge and then say, "These identities are against God's design," or they say, "This agenda is disgusting," or they say, "Our black students don't do as well on assessments because maybe they don't have fathers," and we've heard all of those things from this microphone over the past year and a half. We've heard every single one of those things. I'm afraid I don't have space on my side of the river for your bridge to plant. I don't. I don't have time for it. So everyone needs really, I think, to figure out how to be for something and how to talk about building a real bridge between the goals that we have in common. Realize that unless you do that, the reckless nastiness is the only problem you're really describing in what you're saying. You're not exposing an agenda, you're not protecting anybody, you're just modeling reckless nastiness, and I already know everything I need to know about that problem. Too much of life experience is distressing as a result of that problem. And as a result, children won't learn, they won't grow, and communities won't flourish. I'll never see the day when these things are fixed, you know, but I'm never going to stop trying to fix them. That's what the policies you've passed here on this board tell me to do, tell us all to do who work here at Central, then that's, as I've said before, that's what the history of our profession, the entire history of public education in America tells us to do. Each student, free to be who they are, it's their school, it's their future, not mine, not ours. Thanks. So.
I'm going to start right now by setting the tone for this meeting, and I expect respect from everybody in this room, everybody at this table, and when it's time for public comment, I will demand that of everybody else in this room. So I'm going to ask of it, of everyone right now, no matter who is speaking tonight.
So I have to switch gears. Sorry, Jessica, but I have to turn it over to Jessica Cangelosie-Hades, our wonderful director of curriculum. Where is she? There she is. Share information about our NJGPA scores from last year. Now, NJGPA is one of the several assessments that we have to report on, and as I mentioned last month, we used to be able to do this all in one single meeting. However, the pacing of the assessments and the state's reporting of scores has forced us to do it across multiple meetings in order to meet the mandated timelines for sharing all this information. All of this, though, for scores in which, and I've said this, and I don't mind sort of characterizing it in this way, we have little confidence in particularly NJGPA as a true measure of our students' proficiency or readiness for graduation. NJGPA, and Jessica will describe it as a field test, which means, of course, that our students knew that it didn't count. Tonight, we're going to hear about all of that and just how that compares to our performance over the past few years. So I apologize for that tough introduction, Jess, but I'm going to turn it over to you. You all have a copy of this presentation. It's also in the minutes on Board Docs, so if you want to stay up here, we'll bring the screen down for Jess to be able to present.
Okay, third time's a charm. So thank you for having me here tonight. We're here to talk about our NJGPA field test results, and NJGPA stands for the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. Before we get into the summary of the results, I did just want to give an overview about the assessment because this is a new assessment from the Department of Education. We were informed last year in September that the Board of Education adopted the requirement to administer the NJGPA to all students in grade 11. And this is how this goes, not, you know, you've heard about curricular mandates before, but also with testing, that the Board of Education sets the standard for what we, as a school district, are responsible to do. So previous, prior, excuse me, prior to administering the NJGPA in grade 11, as you will recall probably from my presentation last month, we were administering the NJSLA to students. And last year, we just tested students in grade 9, but prior to that, we did grades 9 and 10, and even before that, when we were in park mode, we tested students in grades 9, 10, and 11. So just to set the tone in terms of testing, the NJGPA is administered in math and in English Language Arts, so that's important for you to know. It's designed to measure student graduation readiness as they align to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So for English Language Arts, that was based on grade 10 standards, and in math, it was based on Algebra I and Geometry. So a little bit different than the course or the grade level-specific NJSLA. Now, what had happened is, right prior to the week that we administered this in March, a bill was actually introduced to count the NJGPA as a field test or to not count the results at all. And so I note that just anecdotally, that that did impact our administration and students' you know, performance on the administration, in my opinion, because they knew that it could possibly not count for graduation. Lo and behold, in July of 2022 this year, Governor Murphy signed legislation to make the NJGPA a field test for the students in class of 2023. So we are still reporting on these results, but they are not required for graduation for the students in class of 2023. That leads me to the next point, that ironically, there are student performance levels at the reporting. So this reporting is different than what you saw with NJSLA. It's not levels 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. It's instead, they're reporting students as graduation-ready and not yet graduation-ready. And for me, that's quite a statement to say, based on one assessment, a student is graduation-ready or not yet graduation-ready. So what we did is we took extra care in explaining this to parents and guardians who received the letter with their results, to note that just because this says that, that doesn't impact and determine if you are graduating or not. That's especially true in this case because the NJGPA is a field test, but even for future classes, so class of 2023, class of 2024, you know, whatever may be, it's important to note that the NJGPA is required to sit for and take the assessment, but there are alternative pathways to showing graduation readiness. So there's, you can use old NJSLA scores, you can use Accuplacer ASVAB, you can use SAT scores, and then there's even something called a portfolio. So I did want to note that in terms of how students show that they're graduation-ready, it's not simply based on one assessment. So when we look at our results overall, we're looking again at who's graduation-ready. So in math, 65% of our students were tested as graduation-ready, and English Language Arts, 57% of the students tested as graduation-ready. You can see, when we compare this to the state, we are well above the state. And I will also note that we're also above, our averages or our average percentage of students who are graduation-ready is above schools with a similar DFG. So of course, we would always like to see that be 100%, but we are not there, but we are glad to see that we are well above the state. And if you recall from last month, that wasn't necessarily the case with all the NJSLA results. Most of the time, we were above the state, I think, with the exception of Algebra I, but there was also a narrower gap between the state average and our average here. So it's good to see that in 11th grade, our students really are doing well and perhaps catching up from where they were in 9th grade with us. So next, we're going to compare by various demographic subgroups, and so we'll start with gender comparison of female and male, and that's what the state asked us to report. So what we see here is interesting, that in math, males are outperforming females, but then in English Language Arts, we see females outperforming males. And so this is not something new. We knew this based on our results that we had been seeing within Lincoln and other assessments that we administer here, but it's something that we have to pay attention to. So for example, in English Language Arts, and you'll hear more about this when we are able to pick up our department presentations again, but you know, that's the importance of offering choice, of offering different voices and different authors in English Language Arts, to make sure that the students feel connection with what they're doing in their English Language Arts classes. Next, we will show our breakdown within race and ethnicity. And so here is some disappointing data, I would say, in terms of the disparities between the subgroups, and it goes to what Dr. Moore was saying in his introduction and in his report. So you can see that our Hispanic or Latino students, that's about 90 students there, are definitely lower in the overall percentage than all of our students. You can see that our Black or African-American students are lower than all the other students. That number is about 17 Black students that's there, so of course, each student makes up a larger percentage than the overall 635 students that tested. However, it's something we have to pay attention to, it's something that we cannot ignore. And last but not least, we want to break it down by comparison of student program. So once again, disappointing data, but something that we have seen and remains true, you know, we saw it on the NJSLA last month, our economically disadvantaged students are performing lower as compared to all students. Our English Language learners, they are identified with a color. Unfortunately, we have 0% there, and I didn't want to hide that. That's about 25 students, grade 11, so that's something we need to look at. Our students with disabilities is also quite low, as you can see, for the IEP. The students with the 504 are closer, the gap is not as wide. One final comparison, and this is a difficult one. So the NJGPA is a new assessment, as I noted, and so we have nothing to compare it to. So this comparison is not apples-to-apples, but it's something worth noting, and it does go back to what I was talking about when I presented the NJSLA results. When we look at prior tests of grade 11 students, especially in the case of English Language Arts, I think it's a better comparison, we can see actually an increase in the proficiency. So this is a little difficult because we have not administered testing within grade 11 since 2018, as you can see there. So I have 2017 park data, 2018 park data, and then our most recent NJGPA. And so in math, there were 46% and then 43%, and this time, we jumped up to 65%. Again, not apples-to-apples because math is comprised of, in the park years, course-specific assessments, so meaning Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. This is a combination of all of those. And then for English Language Arts, that really is grades 11. So there's obviously a four-year gap between the first two pieces of data and the last one, but you can see that we've slowly been increasing 45%, 49%, and then 57% most recently on the NJGPA. And I think that's important to note because we do hear a lot about learning loss, and we do have, we do have gaps. We certainly do have gaps, but as you can see, we've made progress along the way, and if you recall from our NJSLA, I did tell you that, you know, what we're seeing in 9th grade, we've accounted for by grade 11, and so I wanted to make sure that you were able to see this slide here. So I want to talk about interventions, and I will specifically give some examples on the next slide, but just overall, what the state said we should be doing with the NJGPA field test results is review curriculum and programming, and then identify potential focus areas to make sure that students who have to take this in the future are able to prove themselves graduation-ready. So for us, it's important to not just use the NJGPA data, but we compare it with other data. So we have had a lot of testing, I can't deny that. Unfortunately, the state tripled our testing. We used to just give one assessment. Last year, we gave Start Strong, and then we had NJSLA and NJGPA in the spring, and we thought Start Strong would go away, and it didn't. So we're still giving all these three different assessments instead of just one. But what's important to us is to make sure we have really reliable data. The NJGPA is new. We don't know, we don't have that longitudinal comparison. So we really, it's important for us to triangulate it with other data. So we've given the PSAT, that's really a very reliable assessment and data that we can use to see, you know, who really needs interventions. Was it just one assessment that they didn't perform as well on, or is it multiple assessments? Using our Lincoln assessments, I spoke about this last month, but as a reminder, Lincoln is an assessment system as well as a data dashboarding system that we use, and they have three benchmark assessments in math and English Language Arts that we administer throughout the year. So we administer at the start of the year, about mid-year, and then closer to the end of the year, to measure performance as students are doing in preparation for the NJSLA or the NJGPA. And then most importantly, I don't want to disregard the importance of our course benchmarks that we have. So our departments and our professional learning community teams by course really work to develop aligned assessments and common assessments so that we can use this data in conjunction with our standardized assessment data. So for students who are performing lower on assessments, and again, not just one assessment, comparing multiple assessments, we do have a multi-tiered system of supports in place. Tier one, there are three tiers in multi-tiered system of supports. Tier one occurs in class with the teacher. Tier two is where we have our RTI, our Response to Intervention, for students during the school day within their class period. So we have teachers who have RTI, a Response to Intervention, period built into their schedule, and they'll push in or pull out depending on the need, and they work with the teacher to target specific skills in which students need extra practice or extra help with. Students may be in there for a few weeks, they may be in there for a few months, they may be in RTI for the whole year. It's whatever the student needs to get them caught up and get them where they should be so they're proficient. We also use Block Five tutorial, and then spring tutorials, which are optional, we offer them after hours in the spring. Those are good, but those are optional to attend, and I Those are good, but those are optional to attend, and I think we discussed that last month, the difficulty sometimes of getting students to attend those. Again, I don't want to undermine the work in our departments. Our teachers are really phenomenal at using data. We are, in our district, we're lucky that we have every Tuesday during Block Five for departments, for professional learning communities, for specific teachers of specific courses to work together to look at this data. And I'm going to kind of show an example of that on our next slide. But once again, just the final piece of information for interventions, we are working really closely with our sending districts to make sure that students are ready for when they get to high school, and looking at their curriculum to look at our curriculum and see, does it truly align? And I think I said this last month, but it's important. What does it mean to be Algebra I-ready when you come to high school? So some strengths. So I wanted to highlight what teachers see and what our data, our data teams are using when they're looking at Lincoln data or testing data specifically. What was interesting is when looking at this, English Language Arts, Lincoln, as well as the NJGPA, really align pretty well. So the proficiency for the NJGPA, I believe, was 57%. On Form A for this fall, I believe we sat right around 56%. And so that's already, we're at the 56 proficiency. It doesn't align perfectly as you go throughout the year, but it's showing that there is good alignment between the Lincoln assessment and the NJGPA. Similarly, the strengths and the areas for focus came out to be the same. So this is really important to us. So within Lincoln, we're able to drill down to target skills or target topics, but then even when, within that, you're able to go right down to the standard. So I gave an example in ELA, something that is, and when Mr. McIsaac presents you, you'll see this as well, but determines who are more central ideas of a text. So what do we do with that? And that's exactly what the team of teachers will talk about. What can we do about that? What have you done? You know, we noticed in Lincoln, your scores are higher on this particular standard. What have you done? So it's a matter of sharing ideas and then implementing any sort of activity changes that we need to make to the classroom. And they're constantly doing this. This is not once a year. This is a constant cycle that they're looking at data. In math, math was a little trickier in terms of aligning with Lincoln and the NJGPA because the NJGPA, again, was a grade 11 assessment. Lincoln does it by course. But by and large, we did have some themes pop out. So we have strengths here in building functions and solving problems involving exponents. But then when you look at areas of focus, multi-step contextual problems, interpreting functions, and seeing structure in expressions. One thing I want to note, and I gave an example focus there intentionally, one of the issues we see within Lincoln, and when teachers are using this data to review and possibly make changes to curriculum, we're seeing a high emphasis on statistics within Algebra II. And that's just within Lincoln, that's not necessarily within our curriculum. So then we have the discussions as a data team, how critical is it? So for example, in the Lincoln assessment, I think 11 of the 30-something questions had to do with statistics and probability, which is, you know, 1/3 of our curriculum in Algebra II is not statistics and probability. So we have, those are things that we have to use our professional expertise on, and this is why we do not only rely on state assessments, we're looking at what are the prerequisite skills for the next course? What is most important to teach within that so students are prepared for that next course? So I wanted to give you a sense of the work our teachers do. They do a really excellent job at looking at this, and certainly, there's more work to do. You know, again, we always hope that we'll get to 100% graduation-ready, but we don't, we are not there, as you know, and so this work will continue as we get closer and closer to that. So that is my presentation tonight. Dr. Moore, would you like me to take questions?
Thank you.
So just a couple of quick points. I want to just confirm, in your slide where you're comparing the Parks to the NJGPA, that's all a series of tests that ultimately, none of them counted for graduation ultimately, right? There was always alternative assessments, there were always, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And students have always known that.
Yeah.
I do also want to highlight the importance of the PSAT in our assessment regime this year, for lack of a better term. PSAT, we have a lot of trust and faith in that test. We gave it to every student, 9th, 10th, and 11th grade this year. Correct? 9th, 10th, and 11th?
Yes.
And so how that measures and articulates with these other tests is going to tell us not only just about how kids are doing, but also about those other tests. So we're looking forward to those coming out to help us in all this analysis this winter. But of course, we're not waiting for that, as Jessica mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Jessica, from anyone here? Nope. All right. Dr. Charney.
Thank you, Jess, for that very comprehensive presentation. I do, and I want to reiterate, reemphasize what Dr. Moore said. The problem with the testing that we're obligated to give is that there's a lot of it, and it always seems to be in some netherworld of whether it counts or whether it doesn't count. Across the state, Start Strong and New Jersey SLA have given all districts problems. Students really, at least partly, part of the student population does not take it seriously. The debate about New Jersey GPA was that finally, there's a test that you have to pass, be proficient in to graduate. So that's what we characterize as a high-stakes test and that students would pay attention to it. But I can only assume that once they said this was really a field test, that the word was out and they knew that it wouldn't count. So I think the results, you know, I think the math performance is probably pretty good and within, you know, a district such as this, if you can get within spitting distance of the 70 percentile in math, you're doing pretty well. I am disappointed with the ELA percentage proficiency because what that means is 4% are not proficient in English Language Arts, and that's problematic. I'm thinking and hoping that a significant segment of our students did not take it seriously. So the important, the test affect started to play into the results more than it should have. But I think the district is taking, you know, pointed, focused remediation measures to address it. The only thing I would urge is that these are voluntary measures, Block Five tutorial after school. In my experience, these don't work. You really have to make it mandatory, and of course, by that, you implement positive incentives such as, you know, okay, you flunked this first test in Algebra II. If you go through this, if you're remanded to this homework segment and work, then you can retake the test. So if you can, if you can implement measures like that, then that becomes a more positive incentive for students, and they'll start buying into it. I think if you, if the district continues along the path of this is a voluntary opportunity, you will not get significant upscale responses in your test. So that would be my urge, my recommendation, and I think there are ways to do it. You can celebrate successes, you can reward students implicitly for engaging and trying to help themselves, and I think the results of that effort will be positive. So again, thanks for the very comprehensive report. It is much better than the New Jersey SLA or Start Strong, and that's positive, but I would expect it to be. So now, going forward, I would say the next, you know, you never know with the governor, but the next test might count. So we have to start persuading students of that and saying, you know, you have to do well on this test to graduate. And then we might start seeing positive performance.
Thank you.
Jessica, thank you so much. All right, so the last thing in my report, we have a HIB item to move on, and we also have our monthly HIB and suspension report. I just wanted to point out one thing on the suspension report. We're starting again to implement in-school suspension. We've talked about that a little bit, so that's been a pilot project for the time being, but I'll share more as we work to expand that as another answer for our students. The reason I bring that up is our HIBs are at a lower point than they were last year at this time, which I know since we're only meeting monthly, it feels like we've got a lot all of a sudden, but we had more at this time last year. But our suspensions are up a little bit, and so we're looking at in-school suspension and some other restorative-type practices and therapeutic responses that can help us there. And there is action that you need to take on the HIB that we discussed in closed session last time, HIB 001. And with that, with thanks for everyone's patience and thanks to Jessica for her great report, turn it back over to you, Mrs. Hughes.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Before you conclude your report, can you just give the board a brief update on where we're at with the regulation that corresponds to our student protest policy, please?
Yes. So we have a group of staff members that have been set up as a subcommittee from our district safety team. We have a district safety team that meets regularly and have had that for many years. They're engaged in a learning phase right now. They've met with a school law attorney to discuss different considerations around free speech and freedom of assembly. And we're working to come together with school security specialists with the Department of Ed and potentially also somebody from the county prosecutor's office to give us some additional legal considerations. But they'll begin to coming together soon to start drafting out a regulation for the O&amp;T Committee, the Operations and Transportation Committee, to begin to look at. Regulations don't require board approval, but I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to see that before we operationalize it.
Thank you for that update. Okay, can I have a motion to affirm HIB 2223-001?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Upstee.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask, before we go into the first resonance forum, to jump to the organizational items, can I just have a motion, please, to approve the anti-bullying specialist?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I apologize, I didn't mention that in my report, we're just adding an additional with our, with our new SAC there, adding our new SAC to the anti-bullying specialist roles.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Nope. Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move into our first resonance forum. This is for only action items on the agenda. If you have a general comment, we'll have a second resonance forum after our committee reports. Okay, seeing none. Move into our committee reports, student life and programs. Mr. Richard?
Yes. We have several items to move tonight. The first one regards a first reading on a policy, Policy 9560, which concerns administration of school surveys. The policy has been rewritten to reflect the enactment of a new statute that allows school districts to administer an anonymous voluntary survey, assessment, analysis, or evaluation concerning student health if prior written notification with an option to opt-out has been provided to parents when the survey has the potential to reveal information about specific listed topics. Ms. Cangelosi-Hayde noted the policy's relevance as the district will be administering two voluntary forms in the near future. This includes a getting-to-know-you questionnaire from the counseling department. The goal of this questionnaire is to gain better understanding of a student and their goals and aspirations so counselors, teachers, and other certified staff can personalize their learning experiences. The district also plans on administering the Pride Survey as part of its partnership with Prevention Resources. This anonymous survey has been conducted nationally for over 30 years to take core measures on adolescent use of alcohol, drugs, and risky behaviors. 1.2 is a policy for second reading. This is a second reading of Policy 5512 on harassment, intimidation, or bullying. Mr. Brandt reiterated that one of the changes to the policy includes a preliminary determination section which allows the principal, in consultation with the anti-bullying specialist, to make a preliminary determination about an incident and not complete an investigation. All preliminary determination decisions must be approved by the superintendent. This incident still receives a HIB number in the event the family wants to appeal the preliminary determination decision. Mr. Brandt noted that some initial HIB reports do not involve distinguishing characteristics of specific groups and thus do not meet the requirements for classification of HIB. In these instances, these incidents are considered conflicts and are handled through the code of conduct. 1.3, North Hunter and Voorhees Regional School District is sending students to our ELL program. Ms. Cangelosi-Hayde reviewed the agreement with North Hunter and Voorhees to have additional, an additional student from their district to attend Hunter and Central. The district now receives eight out-of-district placements for our ELL. Early graduation, 1.4. Ms. Cangelosi-Hayde reviewed the student application for early graduation. Last month, the committee discussed the administrative code and district policy for early graduation. The district has begun to transition its traditional early grad practices to align with administrative code. The district has sent information about the requirements for early graduation to the families of the class of 2026. 1.5, there's a new club, Tech 14s. Ms. Cangelosi-Hayde presented the proposals. This club proposal came from a nonprofit entrepreneurial venture of two Central students and is also associated with the student's independent study project. Tech 14s is an outreach club that will provide Central students with opportunity to spread STEM education opportunities. 1.6 is a new club, Graphic Design. Mr. Brandt presented the proposal for the Graphic Design Club, an activity for students who are passionate about graphic design and would also like artwork, logos, and design outside of art class. 1.7, new club, One is Greater Than 99, or Student Ministry. Mr. Brandt presented the proposal for the Student Ministry Club, a faith-based, student-led ministry club. The primary goal is to provide a safe and accepting community of faith for all students seeking to explore their faith. Activities will include Bible study, student-led discussion, and service and fundraising projects. Excuse me. 1.8 is an overnight field trip for the Model U N to Hershey, PA. Mr. Brandt reviewed this with us, and approximately 40 students and four chaperones will attend the conference from January 5 to January 8. Costs for the trip will be approximately $350 to $400 per student paid for by fundraising and the student families. 1.9, staff research proposal. Ms. Cangelosi-Hayde reviewed a research proposal from Hunter and Central Health and Phys Ed teacher Donovan Dinson as part of his Doctor of Education in Kinesiology Program at the University of North Carolina at Greensboro. Mr. Dinson will be using qualitative measurements to understand students' motivation and engagement with Phys Ed. All student data will be de-identified. And finally, there's a couple of things we talked about that are not agenda items. We talked about the field test results, which Ms. Cangelosi presented tonight, so I won't go into detail about that. And lastly, we talked about the Student-Athlete Leadership Team, or or SALT, started a few years ago. Each varsity team selects representatives to the leadership team. The team comes together a few times per year for leadership training and discussions. Mr. Brand discussed the ideas of students in the SALT program, inviting students from other schools in the conference to have a discussion on expectations and norms for spectatorship and sportsmanship. Mr. Brand noted that Mr. Spencer has already begun preliminary discussions with the Athletic Conference. Mrs. Hughes discussed the importance of ensuring that our students are prepared to lead these discussions, and Mr. Brand agreed and said that Central students would have a pre-discussion meeting and training. I noted that years ago, all of the captains of teams in a conference would attend a workshop together at a conference school and then share that information with their student athletes at their host schools. Ms. Hughes remarked that peer-to-peer interactions and influences were extremely powerful, and Ms. Kellogg shared that she had been hearing student feedback about the difficulty and discomfort of managing their peers' behaviors. The community discussed the SALT students helping to develop a code of conduct for visitors and spectators. With that is the report of the Student Life and Program Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. Would you like to move?
I'd like to move 1.1 through 1.9 on the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Nickel, O and T, please.
Yes, the Operations and Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, November 8. We discussed past and upcoming construction projects and their progress. We have several items to move on our agenda this evening. First one is approval to authorize application, acceptance of funding from FEMA for extraordinary costs associated with COVID-19 to the tune of $171,000 plus. We need to approve a resolution to amend 100 and Central Regional High School the 403B retirement plan. It's a required plan amendment detailing the 2020 regulation changes as shown on this agenda. We're going to award building automation, a system upgrade to Johnson Controls. We also have to approve our 2223 budget calendar. All other items as shown on the agenda. And with that, I'd like to move items H1 through H10.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. Bloodfield, you're going to give personnel?
Yeah, so personnel, we do have a couple of items, I believe, we'll be discussing in executive session. And other than that, you might notice that the personnel agenda this month is unusually light. But I'll just kind of go through it briefly and point out a couple of items. We have three resignations. We have the approval of our per diems, including the chaperones from the Dorney Park trip last month. We have our hourlies. The ELL after-school program, teachers that will be paid with Title III funds. We have some of the HCTV student technicians. And it's also that time of year where we approve our snow removal crew. We have a couple more unpaid Schedule C advisors. We're approving a couple more Schedule D winter sports coaches for basketball and fencing. We have two new internships, one with counseling and one with nursing, which is new for us, although it will be working more with the health and PE teachers on health education than in the nursing office. We have a couple of stipends. You might notice there's three bus driver stipends of $500. That's an incentive that we're giving to attract drivers to fill vacancies. And then we have a stipend for the Unified Sports Coordinator, which is funded with a Special Olympics grant rather than being paid as a Schedule D coach. We have a couple of sixth-block stipends, leaves of absences, including our world language supervisor, Laura Arrendato, who will be going on sabbatical for a couple of weeks this summer. And then our professional development. Just point out one there. We have our psychology teacher, Nicole Olbridge, who will be presenting in Philadelphia at a national social studies conference. So that's always great to see. So with that, I will move personnel items 1 through 10.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on any of these items? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And Mrs. O'Donnell, do we have an update on the red committee?
I do.
Thank you.
I do, I do. So we've got many projects underway in fulfillment of our care policy. Dr. Moore provided an overview of these projects, mapped out our strategic framework. The project spanned development, student activities, and athletics curriculum, and more. And they also include partnerships with the College of New Jersey and others. Dr. Moore shared with us next levels of work for continuing to fulfill goals of this policy and noted that student leadership structures would be a key to that work. And I know we're going to hear more of an update from you at a future meeting. In the discussion of these projects, Dr. Moore noted a concern about the continuing need for anti-bias education for students, including at K-8 grade levels. Though the number of HIB cases is lower than at this time last year, there is a high proportion of cases involving incidents that potentially trigger our policy definition of a bias-related act. Dr. Moore noted that our policy and regulation takes a no-tolerance stance on bias-related acts, but that there is a need for more restorative practice that allows students to make amends and grow rather than just receive punishment, particularly when there is a lack of anti-bias education in the K-8s and a lack of understanding of the concern in some homes. Students have approached a board member and the administration about expanding religious holidays on our school calendar to include the South Asian Festival of Diwali, observed in the fall in Hinduism, Jainism, Sikhism, and also by some Buddhists. Dr. Moore noted that the Muslim holiday of Eid in the spring would also be a holiday that should receive this consideration to join the Jewish holidays that we traditionally take off in the fall and the placement of winter and spring breaks around Christian holidays. Since there is growing diversity in our community, Dr. Moore discussed efforts to accommodate these holidays in the design for next year's calendar. He noted that several holidays are on the weekend next year, which allows us to begin to expand recognition of holidays, but that there would be some years in which a large number of holidays, like Rosh Hashanah, Yom Gavur, Diwali, and Eid, occur on weekdays. All of these days are recognized by the Department of Education as recognized days that would trigger excused absences if the district remained open. So this is an ongoing discussion of how we can address those. And I had asked if the district had planned last week or this past week to make any announcement to honor Transgender Awareness Week. Dr. Moore responded that he was in discussions with Mr. Cohen and Mr. Brand to first see if the Pulse Club had anything in the works, as clubs have been marking these events in the district's ongoing effort to bring student leadership and ownership into celebrations and observances. He noted, however, that they were working with the Pulse Club as a result of the drag show incident and that there may unfortunately be a lack of confidence or concern about marking the event. And also, several students have, you know, brought to my attention that we're really not, we're not addressing fair, safe bathroom access and access to changing for gym and sports. Another student noted that during the morning and lunch and after school, that the gendered bathrooms are always open, but the unisex bathrooms aren't. So I mentioned that to you, Dr. Moore, and we're going to look into that and find out why that is and hopefully correct that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Donnell. So there's no action items, correct?
No.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll conclude our committee reports. I just have two brief additional items. The first is, I want to congratulate the newly elected members of the Board of Ponder and Central, Rebecca Peterson, Sue Duggan, and Jerry Reymore. We look forward to welcoming them in January and working with them next year, starting next year. Dr. Moore and I have already reached out and started scheduling some orientation issues for them. I know next month, we're going to spend a lot of time celebrating Rob, Scott, and Jeff, Attorney. But I will just briefly say that it is going to be a tremendous loss to the district to lose these three board members, but we will celebrate them more next month. The last thing I just want to leave with the board is some food for thought for entering the end of this year into next year. Dr. Moore and I have talked about the possibility of creating a communications committee, possibly ad hoc, possibly permanent. We're just sort of in the initial stages of discussing it, but I wanted to put it out there for the rest of the board to think about. And our thoughts are generally to share positives and accomplishments and successes of the district, which I don't think we do enough. Also, to debrief on some of the challenges we've had with communication in the past with some of the incidents. And to come up with a district-wide communications policy, which I don't think we really have in place.
We have boilerplate.
Boilerplate, great.
But it's a good area.
Good area for us to innovate, certainly.
So just some food for thought for moving into next month, into next year. It's something that I think that we could do, and we could do a better job at communicating sometimes. And so that's something that we will talk some more about next month. It's a little bit of a slippery slope because we have to be careful. This is not going to be a committee of board members who are going to oversee and approve every administrative email that goes out. That's obviously well outside of the scope of what the board is allowed to do. So we have to talk, talk to board council, going to talk to some other districts who have communications committees. But we agree that it is something that we can benefit from here in district. So just stay tuned for more information about that. Does anybody else have any additional board business? Okay, with that, we're going to move into our second residence forum. Can I get a show of hands of how many folks intend to speak tonight?
It's not terribly too many.
Yeah, we don't have a lot. So my thought is, what I'd like to propose to the board is, since there was no speakers at the first residence forum for the action items, taking that 30 minutes and combining it, as we've done in the past when we've had large crowds, with the 30 minutes of general comments. But just a little bit different tonight, what I'd like to do is take that first 30 minutes and limit it to students, staff, and residents of our sending districts, so that they have the first 30 minutes. And then the second 30 minutes will be general comments for anyone who's here who'd like to speak. Is everybody okay with that plan? Okay, so for the first 30 minutes, if there's anybody who is a student in district, a staff member in district, or a resident of one of our sending districts, please feel free to come up to the mic, write your name. Yeah. Yeah, the other thing that I think makes sense because of the size of the crowd, just to make sure everybody is heard, as we've done in the past, we're going to limit each speaker to three minutes rather than five, because five minutes, we're not going to get through everybody. We have more board business. We have executive session items. So we're going to start with three minutes. I'm going to very briefly reiterate our expectations. Respectful communication from the crowd, from the speaker. If you're speaking, you're here to address the board, not one member in particular, not one member of administration, not a member of staff, not a member of the public. And please, everyone in the public, be respectful and kind and compassionate when somebody is speaking. Dr. Moore will time everyone who's speaking. And since we're down to three minutes, at two minutes, you'll get a warning that you'll have one minute remaining. And again, I ask, and the public has been great, so I want to thank everybody for this year being just really, really willing to work with us and stay within those timelines of three minutes. So thank you in advance for doing that, because we have a lot of folks who have important things to say, and we want to hear them all. So thank you.
Hello. My name is Evan Nina. I'm a junior here at Hunter and Central, as well as the president of the Pulse Club here at Hunter and Central. I'm here to shed light on the drag show that was run after school during Block 5, actually, right on this stage in the Little Theater. It has come to my attention that some of you had or still have concerns regarding the ongoings of said drag show. There was a blog post made regarding the drag show that has gained some traction amongst these particular groups. I'm here to alleviate some of these concerns. Our club is a safe space for LGBTQ students, as well as friends. Many of the LGBTQ students haven't shared their personal feelings to either the public, their parents, or both, hence why it was invitation-only, and no official statement to parents was provided. This ensured that the members of Pulse could feel safe and confident like they were and still are supposed to be able to in Pulse. This is the second time that we have had this event for just our members' entertainment. And the only reason it was in the Little Theater this year is that our group has outgrown Ms. Baldwin's classroom. Many of the students here at Hunter and Central are also quite disruptive. This has been consistently shown at our fundraisers in which our members are harassed with picture-taking and jokes being made at our expense, as well as verbal taunts. Incidents like these have prompted me, as an officer of Pulse, as well as my fellow officers, to place extreme emphasis on preventing future incidents like these. So we have decided to close ourselves off, as it were. Students who participated in the show wore school-appropriate attire, including dresses below the knee and pants with skirts on top as well, as beautiful and elaborate makeup styles as a way to express themselves while lip-syncing songs of their choice. At no point in time was there a stripper pole or any stripping of any sort, or sexualizing of any sort. Staff, including teachers and administrators, were invited to show support to the students in the club as they expressed themselves. This was supposed to be a fun and safe activity done by the Pulse Club, but after Ms. Baldwin's email was leaked from Hunter and Central, Pulse has received a lot of hate and backlash from parents and community members trying to malign the club and event and the intentions surrounding the event into something perverse and grossly inaccurate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Amelia Braunhard Yates. I am from East Amwell Township, and I am a junior here at Hunter and Central. I am also one of the co-presidents of our school's Pulse Club. As many of you may know, there has recently been a great deal of misinformation being spread about the drag event that our club held on October 28. I've come here today to set the record straight and demonstrate to you the importance of what we do. Let me start out by saying that we are so tired of being seen as wrong and dirty for simply expressing ourselves. There was absolutely nothing inappropriate that occurred at our event. Students dressed up in school-appropriate costumes, wore makeup, and lip-synced to pop songs on this very stage as a team-building exercise. In fact, I was wearing the same outfit that I am tonight, one which I frequently wear to debate competitions. So what exactly do people find inappropriate about our show? Perhaps it is the use of the word "drag." Merriam-Webster Dictionary defines drag as "entertainment in which performers caricature or challenge gender stereotypes as by dressing and clothing that is stereotypical of another gender." It inherently has nothing to do with sex or sexuality, and we are not responsible for other people's biases and misconceptions. All we did was put on costumes and have fun. And as a student, it is incredibly frustrating to a full-grown adults who weren't even in attendance at our event spreading lies about it. They ask us why the event was in-fight only, but how could we not make it private when the entire purpose of our club is to provide a safe space for students to be themselves, when there are students who aren't ready to come out yet, and when I can't even be openly gay without being harassed in the hallways? The number-one goal of Pulse is to provide a space for students where we can feel safe and accepted without judgment. Many students feel like they can I should be at home right now studying for my chemistry test tomorrow, but instead, I am here having to defend myself and my community from those who refuse to let us be ourselves. We would like to thank you, the board, for allowing our club to provide that space and host fun events such as our drag show, and hope that you continue to do so. A special thanks to Dr. Moore for all he's said and done for us in the past. It truly means so much to us. Thank you so much for listening, and have a good night.
Thank you, Amelia.
Hello. My name is Silas Sova. I'm from Reddington Township, and I'm also a co-president of Hunter and Central's Pulse Club, and I'm a sophomore at Hunter and Central. I would just like to quickly discuss the importance of the club to our school, the importance of our safety, and what the club means to me. The purpose of Pulse is for LGBTQ students and allies to have a safe space where they can be themselves. Safety and security of our club members is what we strive for. It's very disheartening to hear that some people don't want us to be ourselves. Most of the teachers and admins have been very supportive and respectful of our club, specifically Ms. Baldwin, our club advisor, and Dr. Moore, our superintendent. However, our trust has been broken by some staff members who have rallied a Facebook group to talk about them not supporting LGBTQ students, as well as spreading rumors and misinformation. We have been challenged time and time again by non-Pulse students, parents, outside groups, and now teachers we are supposed to trust. Many people have also been questioning our intentions of keeping our events private, but they also don't want to listen to our reasoning. The reason some of our events are invite-only is for the safety of our members. Some of them aren't out to the public or don't want to be faced with the homophobia that can be prevalent in our school from our experience. We understand that homophobia will exist, no matter what we do to protect our members from it, but that doesn't mean we still can't try. Pulse has been such an important aspect of my school life since I came into high school, and some people can't seem to understand why the safety of our club and members is so important. I want to live my life without fear of being harassed, and I want the rest of Pulse to feel like that, too. Pulse gave me a space where I didn't have to feel afraid of my identity. I became a co-president to help other students feel the same way I felt, not to have our club be put down by adults who don't know or care about what we do or stand for. So even if our club is the only place where our members can have a chance to be themselves, I want to make it the most inclusive and safest place I can, and I hope you will all continue to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Not here about the Pulse Club. Diane Schubach, I'm actually here about the soccer incident.
Could you please state your residency for the record?
Flemington, Pony Lane.
Thank you.
I'm here to talk about, I didn't actually realize this was going to be a monologue, or I would have prepared something better. I work in government. When we have open session, we actually talk back and forth with the residents. The soccer incident. There's been almost no communication from the school about the investigation that was going on. We have the parents of the kids who were there. We have no idea what's going on. I know several of us have written, we've emailed. I realize after hearing Dr. Moore tonight that he's busy and can't answer all of those emails and phone messages. This email that he sent, that I feel was written for publication, not information, states yesterday, and by the way, if we check the timeline on this, the game was at 5:00 at night. 11:20 a.m., Dr. Moore emailed you all and told you that there was an incident, allegation. By 1:45 that same day, Dr. Moore had apparently investigated and determined that, what he wrote in this email, which I'll read, "Yesterday, Central students who were attending our women's soccer game against Linden heckled specific members of the visiting team. Heckling included dehumanizing outbursts at a visiting student of color." This is simply not true. It's not what happened, and those boys who you accused of doing that are owed an apology. You know, all the kids here should be protected by you, not just some of the kids here. Maybe you saw, maybe you saw them, maybe you saw them attacking a child of color, but that's not what happened. My daughter was on that field. All the rest of the girls that were on that field, you can keep checking that. All the rest of the girls that were on that field, none of them would have tolerated that.
Schubach, we're checking our timers. That's what we're doing on our phones, just so you know.
None of them would have tolerated that. They all would have stopped the game. Instead, we got this, so that it could be published in the paper, saying that you're working very hard to clean up our community, which I guess is just full of, I think, further down in here, you said, "There's been a flurry of accusations of harassment, intimidation, and bullying on campus," which is sort of contrary to what you said tonight, which is that Hillary report is down right now. So I'm a little confused about that, but I'm more confused about why we get no communication about where you are with the investigation. None. These kids deserve an answer. They went to other schools after this and were yelled at by other kids, calling them racist because of what you wrote. Where's the protection for those kids? Did you care that they were going to go to another school? Our boys, you can look around, too. Our boys, our boys went, right after you did this, two days later, traveled to Newark East Side to play, and you wrote in here that they were racist, and they are owed an apology.
Thank you, Mrs. Schubach.
They're owed an apology by all of you.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Andrew Midgley. I'm a school psychologist and a staff member here at Hunter and Central. So I am here to talk about the Pulse Club and the drag show. As a staff member at Hunter and Central for the past two years, I've been consistently impressed at how supportive many of my colleagues are for our LGBTQ students. I see tremendous value in the support offered by the Pulse Club and events such as the drag show. While I genuinely understands the value of every minute of instructional time, I also see the importance of the work the Pulse does for our students. This work helps our students to feel like they can be themselves at Central, to feel accepted, and this is exactly what we saw at the drag show. Students expressing themselves artistically and feeling comfortable being themselves. Emotional well-being is just as important as academic success, and often, academic success suffers when our students feel like they cannot connect with a community of peers like themselves at school, and that includes expressing their interests and expressing themselves. They not only need a time to meet with one another and create a safe space for their fellow LGBTQ students, but they also need that bring that attitude into the greater community of students and staff at Central. What Pulse does for our LGBTQ students is an invaluable part of the Hunter and Central community, and I hope to see students and staff continue to support Hunter and Central's LGBTQ community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Midgley.
Good evening. We, a group of Hunter and Central staff-
Could you please state your name and residence?
Oh, I'm sorry. Melissa Gardner, Flemington.
Thank you.
Sure. We, a group of Hunter and Central staff, have written this letter to voice our concerns related to interruptions to instructional time, equity, and transparency. In just the first few months of school, our students have missed significant instructional time as a result of the administration of mandated state testing, including Start Strong, PSAT, and Lincoln. Instructional time has also been lost due to activity blocks, such as the homecoming pep rally and other school-wide activities. We recognize and understand that this loss of instructional time is necessary due to state mandates or to foster a sense of community among all students. We do, however, remain deeply concerned about the COVID-related learning losses that many of our students are experiencing. So imagine our frustration when passes were given to selected students on October 27th to leave our class at 1:30 to participate in the school-sponsored drag show. Instead of our students being engaged in academic time, they were applying makeup and changing into their drag costumes. This was a loss of over 30 minutes of instructional time for these students. The second issue that we would like to acknowledge is one of equity. On the day of the drag show, October 27th, Dr. Moore responded to an alleged act of racism at a soccer game that had occurred the previous day. He notified in his letter to the community that he was temporarily limiting spectatorship at Hunter and Central athletic events to families of participants on the field or the court. We would like to understand Dr. Moore's rationale for not allowing fellow students, alumni, neighbors, and other community members at athletic events that day, which included the volleyball senior night, but allowed spectators to observe and facilitate the school-sponsored drag show on the same date. One of the invited spectators for the drag show was Phoebe Mantrap, a professional drag queen. From our perspective, it does not seem fair and equitable that Hunter and Central students were not able to celebrate with their peers, but a professional drag queen from outside the Hunter and Central community was allowed. Furthermore, based on the chatter that we have heard amongst the students in our classrooms, Dr. Moore's decision has created significant confusion, division, and resentment between students. Finally, with regards to transparency, we are hoping Dr. Moore and the board can help us understand the rationale why only selected staff were invited to attend the drag show, why were not all staff invited to attend. This does not model inclusivity and further creates a divide, a divided school community. In addition, we wonder if parents were notified that their students would be missing over half an hour of instructional time to prepare for the drag show. Finally, we are curious if the professional drag queen was financially compensated, or did he volunteer his services and expertise to assist and guide our students? We hope that greater transparency will allow us to understand why spectators and visitors were allowed to attend some, but not all, school-sponsored events on October 27th. We hope at some point during our tenure at Hunter and Central that Dr. Moore's decisions will be based on what is fair and equitable to all members of the school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
Hi. My name is Lee Mack, and I'm from Reddington Township. Well, it looks like we've put a whole new meaning to the word "adult entertainment" here, haven't we, Board of Ed? Adult entertainment used to mean adults going to strip clubs, watching other adults engage in sexual behavior. Well, now, thanks to this board, we see adult entertainment as a bunch of high school staff watching young children for their entertainment.
Mr. Mack, you're really getting close to the line of inappropriate content in your comment.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said you're getting very close to abusive language in your commentary. So I understand that there are limitations as to what I can control and curtail of your -- I'm asking you to please be conscious of the audience around you. There are students here, there are staff here, and your words have grave effects on those children in particular.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. Can you also please ask the crowd to be a little more?
Yes, 100%. The rules apply to everybody. Respect, I will give him his time back. Thank you, I can run the meeting. The rules apply to everybody. I do hear some snickering in the corner, and I would ask everybody to please be respectful anytime there is a speaker. Mr. Mack, you can have 30 seconds back.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. So I thank God, parents like those here tonight are finally waking up to these practices that are happening in Hunter Central High School. I thank God that three pissed-off parents won this year's school board elections to take three of your seats away, so that you can walk away with the shame that you so rightly deserve. And to those of you who still retain your seats, those days are numbered, because we will continue to expose the evil that you're doing in secret and behind closed doors. Just the fact that you have to hide this garbage tells us how evil it is. Pretty soon, Dr. Moore, you won't have the right to push this agenda. You will be stuck in this crowd with the rest of us, and we'll only get three minutes to peddle this. And in the meantime, while you still temporarily hold the seats, remember-
Mr. Mack, please address the board, not any individual member of the administration.
This is to the board.
Okay, thank you.
In the meantime, while you guys still temporarily hold these seats, remember, we are looking at all avenues of holding you accountable for these actions. I'm asking anyone here who may have a child that attended one of these events to look up the New Jersey Obscenity Law Statute 2C 34-3. In that statute, you can find where it clearly states, and I quote, "Obscene material means any description, narrative account, display, or depiction of a specified sexual activity consisting of a live performance or film, which by means of posing, composition, format, or animated sensual details, emits sensuality with sufficient impact to concentrate purient interest on the area or activity." And for anyone here tonight who knows someone who's been victimized by this school and now regret decisions to undergo gender change, please send them to a website called sexchangeregret.com. Here you can find thousands of victims who later realized it was not their decision, but from the indoctrination and grooming happening from their peers.
Thank you, Mr. Mack.
Hi. Good evening. Daniel Chekai, Flemington, New Jersey here. My main concern tonight is transportation and safety for all the students that go in and out of the school on a daily basis. I am over here on Justin Court, and for some reason, the contractors, they started a sidewalk that goes to absolutely nowhere. These kids are walking down Junction Road, aka also known as Walter E. Fram Boulevard. The kids are walking, it's dark at night, you can barely see them. Kids today, they don't really even dress appropriately, they wear all dark colors, and you got people that are not paying attention, they're still on their cellphones. When we came to the orientation for my son, we were always told, "Safety, transportation, put them on the bus, put them on the bus, you want them to get there, put them on the bus." We have a bus that comes to our development over there, picks up one girl, and it comes to this school. She is the only person on that bus. There are tons of buses that pass these roads. Not only are the kids walking down the road over here, and then they cut through to the old Junction Road that comes to the school through a muddy path, but I wanted to see some kind of improvement to our transportation, just for the kids to even come across 31. The traffic flow in this area has become outrageous. There's more and more people living here. I moved over this direction, but the kids need a safer route for traveling to school. I mean, we've already had instances right out in front of the school by a kid getting hit by a car last year or the year before, I don't really remember, but for the most part, I just want to see more safe passage concern for it. I mean, we put up giant LED signs on 202 for advertisement and a giant wall around the Flemington Circle that nobody really cares about. I'd rather see more safety towards our kids. We attended a Zoom meeting for the Township Committee, and they were told to come here and propose my case to you, and so that's what I'm here for. I would like to see more safe passage, more sidewalks done, and done for the kids.
Thank you. Dr. Moore, is that something we can get on the operations and -- yeah. We'll connect with you, Mr. Chekai. We'll connect with you afterwards to get some contact information, and we can talk about getting it on the agenda for Operations and Transportation Committee. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Cameron. I'm a sophomore at this school and a part of the LGBT community at Central. This year, I joined the Pulse Club, and it's made me feel better about my sexuality and my identity. I've been able to express myself in this club, and it's made me feel safe. When I step into that room, it, sorry, it reminds me that there are people like me. It reminds me that there's a safe place that I have to talk about LGBTQ life or anything. But when I see people up here talking about how disappointed they are that we are exposed to this stuff, it makes me wonder why they say that, why they can't accept these kids for who they are. They describe this show as disgusting and sexualizing children, say that we shouldn't do this because of the pedophiles in the area, and I wonder why they say that. It's not that we sexualize ourselves, but it seems these people's minds are so messed up that they make it seem that way. I'm sorry to say this, but it makes me wonder that if those pedophiles that they talk about are themselves. Thinking back to, sorry.
Folks.
Thinking back to when, sorry.
Come on, guys.
Thinking back to when I joined this club, I was so happy and excited. I don't think I can stand this club being taken away from not only me, but everyone around me. If Pulse Club is taking from us, I'm sure most people here would be upset. This club is an important part of our lives. Let our students continue to express themselves as they please. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for your time. My name is Heather Mazzio, and I live in Flemington. I am both a parent and an employee at Hunter and Central. First, let me say that I utterly despise public speaking and being the center of attention, but I'm trying to channel Ruth Bader Ginsburg when she said, "Speak your mind, even if your voice shakes." So apologies for any voice or handshaking, as the case may be. The fact that this is even an issue is completely absurd. In the letters written by the Hunter- It reminds me that there's a safe place that I have to talk about LGBTQ life or anything. But when I see people up here talking about how disappointed they are that we are exposed to this stuff, it makes me wonder why they say that, why they can't accept these kids for who they are. They describe this show as disgusting and sexualizing children, say that we shouldn't do this because of the pedophiles in the area, and I wonder why they say that. It's not that we sexualize ourselves, but it seems these people's minds are so messed up that they make it seem that way. I'm sorry to say this, but it makes me wonder that if those pedophiles that they talk about are themselves. Thinking back to, sorry.
Folks.
Thinking back to when-
Come on, guys.
Thinking back to when I joined this club, I was so happy and excited. I don't think I can stand this club being taken away from not only me, but everyone around me. If Pulse Club was taking from us, I'm sure most people here would be upset. This club is an important part of our lives. Let us, let our students continue to express themselves as they please. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for your time. My name is Heather Mazzio, and I live in Flemington. I am both a parent and an employee at Hundred and Central. First, let me say that I utterly despise public speaking and being the center of attention, but I'm trying to channel Ruth Bader Ginsburg when she said, "Speak your mind even if your voice shakes." So apologies for any voice or handshaking, as the case may be. The fact that this is even an issue is completely absurd. In the letters written by the Hundred and Central staff, read to us by Ms. Gardner, their initial issue is that selected students were excused from class 30 minutes early to prepare for an event held during Block 5. This was a one-time event, and these kids weren't in class for two-thirds of the class period. How many times a year do student athletes leave early, sometimes by an hour or more, to travel to away games? If class time missed was truly the concern of these staff members, where is the outrage over class time lost on a regular basis by these student athletes? This occurs in every high school and has since forever. When I was in high school, back in the Dark Ages, I remember lamenting the fact that as a theater kid, we never got out of school early like the athletes did, so this is far from a rare or recent occurrence. The second issue addressed in the letter was one of equity. They were upset that spectatorship at athletic events was temporarily limited due to a racially motivated act of verbal abuse at a soccer game pending an investigation. Why, they asked, could spectators not attend sporting events, but people could attend the drag show? For one thing, the incident occurred at a sporting event, and it's far from the first time such a thing has occurred at sporting events. In fact, it is so commonplace that many sports fields have signs up reminding people that these are kids playing and adults volunteering their time. Spectators often yell at players of the opposing team, coaches, referees, and umpires. That kind of thing doesn't really happen in the arts. I've never been to a choral event and heard an audience member scream at a conductor or in the middle of a play and had someone shout, "What was the director thinking?" For another thing, sporting events are public. While the drag show was a private event, it stands to reason that those invited would be safe, supportive, and encouraging, and not hurling insults at the participants. Which brings me to the letter's final point, why attendance was limited to invite only. If you look at the email sent by Ms. Baldwin, the Pulse advisor, it says that it was sent to staff, not selected staff. That makes their claim that only selected staff were invited seem inaccurate. Further, even if it was only sent to selected staff, that is their right as a private club holding a private event to do so. The event was held by Pulse, the school's LGBTQ plus club. While it should be a given that every single adult working in a school should be an ally and a safe person for every student, sadly, that is not always the case. Attendance at these events should be limited to people who support these kids 100%, people who are allies to them. The letter claims that, quote, "This does not model inclusivity and further creates divided school community, but how dare they put the blame of division of a school community on a group of amazing kids who regularly face harassment, not only from their peers, but from grown adults attacking them? It's no wonder they would want to keep their event limited to only people who are safe and supportive."
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
So we are approaching the end of our first 30 minutes. Other than the folks who are in line at the podium, are there any other people who intend to speak tonight who weren't part of the original group of staff, students, residents? Yeah, you don't need to stand up now, I'm just trying to get a sense of. Okay, okay, that's fine. So we'll just keep rolling, and then it looks like we'll have a couple more at the end. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Chris Reposo, Flemington, New Jersey. I'll be saying a speech on part of my friend Sean, because they're not here today, then it's my speech afterwards. Hello, greetings and salutations, everyone. I am Sean Verma from Arrington. I'm sorry I'm not present here today, I'm currently battling of severe sickness, but I am the mend and getting better, and better each day. I wanted to talk about the drag show and less debunk one rumor about it, it was not a secret drag show, we kept the audience to a minimum to ensure the safety of our students. The only audience members that were allowed in the little theater were the members of Pulse, as well as other people that were invited upon request. This is not done to make sure that everyone performing felt comfortable doing so, and that no one, especially students that are not out of the closet, would be video recorded. Safety comes first, and if that means keeping the audience to a minimum, just like how there were only so many people that can fit into a movie theater, then that is what Hundred and Central aims to do. There is a difference between something being safe and something being secret. Moreover, it has been brought to my attention that some of the distraught at Hundred and Central regional high schools addressing racism at this school. Let me tell you, not discussing issues of racism is the exact reason why there are issues of racism prevalent in our school and throughout the United States. There's a reason why black citizens got their freedom in the United States. Okay, it's because they fought long and hard for the civil rights, which, side point from this, is still happening now, but this continues, it's still happening, never over, and still a lot of problems still to be solved, and enfranchisement to do. I'm sorry to say this, but we don't say anything, the problem just continues. It's truly a beauty that Hundred and Central has clubs like Pulse, because they would provide outlets for expression, and just like any other football or basketball team, there are some outstanding people that I've gotten the chance to meet and relate to. It's one of the very few places where I can be my true and authentic self, just because there are people in this club that provide that safe environment for self-expression, and I couldn't be more grateful to have that. Thank you. So that was on Sean's part.
Thank you, Chris, and Sean.
Yeah. All right. So for my personal speech-
So you've got one minute remaining from your three minutes.
Thank you. I'm part of the Pulse Club myself, I was actually one of the performers at the drag show, and from my personal account, there was definitely nothing sexual about it, it was very liberating, it helped show expression from everyone who was performing, it was beautiful, it showed our community, it showed our love that was present, and I wish there'd really be one every month of this school year, because it was just amazing. And I would have wished it wouldn't have been so exclusive, because what would be ideal is that it was public, and that everyone could go, and there'd be public support of this. But because of the environment we live in, where so much queer phobia, transphobia, and in this bigotry is very alive and affects all our lives, that we need to have this event in this type of circumstance. And I just hope for queer kids in this school, and just for any school in America, to feel safe, because there's always going to be some type of bigotry, or some type of prejudice, or some type of person or factor that will try to push us down. And I hope for the queer youth for the future, that we trailbys, that we push walls, and that we make it safer for them, so that they don't need to go through the things that we've gone through right now.
Thank you, Chris.
My name is Alpha, and I'm a senior here at Hundred and Central. Today, I am here to tell you a story. I got to admit, this wasn't planned, but I feel the need that everybody here needs to hear this tonight. In eighth grade, I came out as non-binary, and I was surrounded by people who did not accept me. My dad said that I was not his child. I was afraid of teachers at my own middle school, because they didn't believe in me. And that year, I almost committed suicide. I still have the self-harm marks on my arm. This is an issue that is taking lives, and everybody needs to understand that. If you don't accept LGBTQ plus youth, if you're trying to disparage us like you are, you're killing us. For me, I was lucky. My dad eventually did learn to accept me. And here in this high school, I found a community that accepts me for who I am. When I went to this drag show, I felt like I belonged. I felt like, finally, my future wasn't in a grave, it was here with my rainbow flag. And so I'm going to leave you all with a message. You may think that you are doing good, but you are killing people. And I ask you, please, to do the right thing, to accept us for who we are, and even if you can't do that, then just walk away and leave us be. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was a Hundred and Central graduate of the Class of 2020. I'm currently a student at the University of Connecticut, I'm pursuing a double major in anthropology and German, and the honors program as well. And I am also queer. I would like to commend the board for their handling of this situation and for taking student concerns into genuine consideration. It's refreshing to see those setting the tone for such a large district, leading with the rhetoric of acceptance and appreciation, rather than one of oppression and bigotry. My experience with homophobia at Hundred and Central runs deep, mainly just taunts in the hallway and comments on the internet, but it was consistent, and frankly, it was exhausting. While the administration did what I would consider everything in their power to make me feel accepted, it was my community which did not make me feel as such. In my opinion, the reason a good chunk of us are here tonight is not to talk about the drag show, it's about homophobia. To all of us who, to all of those who believe otherwise, coming here and spewing hatred and bigotry is not going to make any of us hide. I am unapologetic about my queer identity, and I encourage all of the members of our community and the board to reevaluate how we view queerness as an identity and how it is viewed as somehow inherently sexual. To the board and to my community, if there's anything I want you to take away, is that there is a strong difference between saying a community is welcoming and doing things to make it one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rae, my pronouns are they/them. I am a senior at Central, and I live in Reddington Township. I wanted to speak, before anyone else spoke, I wanted to speak directly to the board, and I will speak directly to the board for a brief moment, about what was said today earlier in the meeting, and the work that some of you have been doing, that I've talked to some of you about, specifically, it has been good, and I want to encourage you to please keep it going. Please do not let your words fall into inaction, please take what you're saying and actually put it into action, because there are so many issues at our high school that I have seen over my four years, and that the incoming freshmen are still having to deal with every day. There are, there were no gender-neutral bathrooms when I was a freshman here, there were no gender-neutral bathrooms in the first half of sophomore year, and now there are gender-neutral bathrooms, but they're in the very far corner of the school, and you can't get to them unless you take a 10-minute walk, and nobody wants to miss class for that, so we just hold our pee all day, or we go during lunch, and then we find out that the gender-neutral bathrooms aren't open at lunch, because the school can't be bothered to staff them with teachers. So then we are forced to go in the binary bathrooms and be uncomfortable in there, or take our friends with us, so we feel safe. And it's not a fun experience for us. And there are also many issues with teachers who fail to use students' pronouns, teachers who ask for our pronouns but then still fail to use them, teachers who wear, you know, "I support you" pins or rainbow flags, but then still fail to use our pronouns, because there is a lack of education for teachers, and there is a lack of education for students. And we do not tell anybody anything about how to actually be accepting and how to actually achieve true equality in our school, the students, or the teachers, or the staff. We need to do better. I need you to take your words into action. And then I will also say now that there were, according to the agenda, there were no HIB reports that were determined as HIB, but I have been conducting interviews recently for an article for my journalism class, and I have talked to multiple people and found out about multiple instances of HIB. There was a trans student who used the binary men's bathroom in the IMC, a freshman who got harassed by a bunch of juniors and seniors. There was a disabled student that got harassed in the hallways, and there have been countless other incidents. I was harassed sophomore year, and many of these students failed to report it, because they're scared that the school will do nothing, and they are scared that other people will do nothing, and they should not have to do that, they should not have to hide for fear of not being accepted. And they should know these things, they should know that there are supports out there for them, and right now, either they're not being aware of the supports, or the supports just don't exist. And to everyone who is here tonight, we're people, we just want to exist. Like, I don't see why you have to come to a town that you don't even live in to yell at students, under 18-year-old students, who are literal children, who are minors, who live with their parents, about their identity. Because, God forbid, we exist as ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Rae. So it looks like we've got about 10 or so more folks, which will take us another half hour, so I would just ask if there's anybody else who'd like to speak who's not in line to please stand up, because at the end of that line, we're going to wrap up public comment. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Wedderburn Maxwell. I am here in the capacity of a grandfather, as I live in Bridgewater, but I have four grandchildren in this district. Prior to coming to the United States, I was a principal of a high school overseas for eight years. Now, according to the Heschingde report, the education in the United States is a failure, because the United States was near the bottom of 72 nations that participated in this trial. Of the 35 developed nations, the United States ranked 31, 31st, and yet spent more money per student than any other nation. Something is clearly wrong with the educational system. And I believe that the reason for the educational deterioration in America is a preoccupation with ideology and sexuality at the expense of academia. You take this drag queen performance as an example. Not only were students taken out of the class to prepare for the performance, but they would have been unable to focus on their studies in any class during the day while their minds were preoccupied imagining about this performance. The question is, is this an academic institution, or is this an ideological institution? If I were to identify, if I were to identify as an elephant, or wanted to change into an elephant, that would be okay if I was a toddler. But as an adult, a real academic institution would teach me that it was scientifically and biologically impossible. It would in fact be a mental disorder, and I should be referred to for psychiatric help. It would be very unloving for people to pretend with me that my delusion was real. The science, the scientific fact is that a man has an X and Y chromosome in every single cell in his body, and a woman have two X chromosomes in every single cell in their bodies. It's biologically impossible for a man to become a woman, or a woman to become a man. And any true academic institution would be promoting science, not playing games like, "Let's all pretend that a drag queen is a woman." A study in Sweden has recently shown that children changing their genders are 19 times more likely to commit suicide, and my concern is that this is a-
Guys, please, please grant the same courtesy to the-
This is a legitimate study in Sweden that's just come out.
Sir, sir, can you just, one moment, I'm trying to help you. Please grant this speaker the same courtesy that we have asked of everyone else. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. This is a legitimate study that's just come out of Sweden. And my concern is this ideology is harmful physically, emotionally, spiritually, mentally, and psychologically, because in reality, a drag queen performance is sexually grooming children, and that's unacceptable in this community. As a school board, you should recognize how divisive some of you are in this community by promoting this exclusive sexual ideology.
Thank you, sir.
Exclusive by virtue of excluding faith and values of the majority of people, of parents. Your purpose is meant to be an academic development of the students, not a preoccupation with students' sexuality or promoting the divisive ideologies.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Leah Ellenberg, and I'm a senior here, and I'm from the JPK Sunding District. In my last four years here at Central, I've- In my last four years here at Central, I've had the chance to feel comfortable enough to outwardly express myself as a lesbian. This was because of the role that many teachers here at Central played. The teachers that create safe spaces where we can express ourselves, like at the drag show that happened a few weeks ago. I would first like to point out the fact that everyone who participated in the drag show was under the age of 18. I think that this reflects more on the adults that are sexualizing children than the children participating in the show at all. If you are a grown adult sexualizing children, you are the problem, not them. That being said, there's nothing inherently sexual about a drag show. The most that happened at that show was kids getting onstage dancing to music fully clothed. The only thing that anyone is finding sexual is the label that these students hold, queer. Banning expression like this drag show is going to do nothing except teach kids like me and all the kids sitting in this audience that they need to be quiet about who they are. These events are the pure moments that students can be themselves and find others like them in such a big school. Luckily, there's a lot of people here to show these kids to not be quiet. And no matter what anyone says, we're not going anywhere.
Thank you Leah.
Hello, my name is Vivian Marr. I'm from Reddington Sanding District and I really don't enjoy doing this. I've said this multiple times. It's not my thing. But I would like to talk about the fact that we did send out passes to allow students to get ready for the drag show. However, if you think about sports teams, there are students who get excused for whole days of school for their sports tryouts or, not tryouts, their comp, games, sorry. I'm not a sports kid either. And we didn't do that. We kept it under 30 minutes, which school policy I believe is 40 minutes missing class for you to count as absent. We've kept it under that. We took the last 30 minutes of the day, in which the last 10 minutes are usually an announcement and then wrapping up your classes. We just wanted our club members to feel included. Pulse's people understanding love serves everyone, everyone. We want to live our lives and not be ridiculed for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you Vivian.
My name is Sandra Gong. I live in Raritan Township. I'm a taxpayer, so I attend these meetings. First, I want to thank Mr. Richard, Mr. McColl, I don't know who else is coming off the board. I will miss you. I think you've done a great job. The folks who are going to sit on the board have big shoes to fill. I'm especially sad to see an educator leave the board. I also want to mention that I didn't grow up in Hunterdon County. I grew up in New York City, in Queens, in a neighborhood called Jackson Heights. Okay? You know, I was going to talk about the soccer game, but I don't have all the facts, so I'm going to leave that. When I moved from New York City to New Jersey, I moved to Scotch Plains, you know what I missed when I moved to Scotch Plains? Sidewalks. It's like, where do people in New Jersey walk? They don't walk on sidewalks? Anyway, so we moved from Scotch Plains to where we are today, Flemington or Raritan Township, call it what you want. And you know what I miss the most? Diversity. It's like, I always tell my husband, kind of a joke, I said, hon, if you die first, I'm heading back east. Okay, here are some work comments from an elder statesman that you probably heard. So it's a quote. "We know that the LGBTQ community has been subjected to horrific hate violence in recent years." This whole speech was really about Colorado Springs. "Places that are supposed to be safe spaces of acceptance and celebration should never be turned into places of terror and violence. Yet it happens far too often. We cannot and must not tolerate hate. There is no place for violence, hatred, and bigotry in America. Yet tragically, the attack in Colorado Springs remind us too many LGBTQ people in the United States and around the world continue to face unconscionable attacks. This is especially true for transgender Americans. Usually, these are young people, young people who aren't hurting anyone. Let's resolve to continue building a country and a community here in Hunterdon County where every person can live free from fear and discrimination." Thank you and have a nice holiday.
Thank you Sandra.
Hello, my name is Jay. I'm a Flemington Borough resident. I grew up in Hunterdon County, even though I graduated from South Hunterdon, the forgotten stepchild. And I can tell you that we definitely never had anything like this while I was in high school. I just want to first off commend the board for allowing the students and residents of the Sanding District to speak first. This is our school, this is our student's school. They should have the voice. And I commend each and every student who came up to the microphone today and spoke, whether or not they felt confident about it or whether they were nervous. I especially commend those who shared their personal stories and struggles because we are here for them. This is their school, they should be safe here. And I am frankly disappointed in the vitriol and hate that we have heard tonight spewed through this microphone. And I am afraid for their safety here at this school and in our community. Last night, we had our first ever Trans Day of Remembrance candlelight vigil at the old courthouse in Flemington and it was pretty well attended. Some of these wonderful students were able to speak there, as well as a middle school student who will be coming and attending here in a few years. As a volunteer coordinator at a local nonprofit, I worked with your students and I am proud of them and I see what wonderful young people they are becoming. And I'm afraid for the community that is backlashing against them and saying that they do not belong. I hope that the school will continue to offer their support to these students and will expand upon the protections that are already built in. And also, I express concern about the HIB report that someone brought up and that there have been comments brought up by Ms. O'Donnell, as well as our students, that no bullying, antagonism, and just general hatred towards our LGBTQ students. And I am fearful that this sort of conversation that we are hearing tonight will only fuel this among the students, staff, faculty, and other community members. I hope the school continues to protect these students and work with them to protect them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Scott Cohen, Dean of Students here at Hundred and Central. I wanted to wait until all of our fantastic students had the opportunity to present their stories, their wisdom, their incredible intellect, and the beauty of who they are. As part of my role, I get to oversee all the student activities, non-athletic. And it's amazing to me, you heard tonight, four new clubs being approved. The Pulse Club was ingratiating and inviting me to participate in one of their meetings. They welcomed me in, as so many of the other students in all of our clubs across Hundred and Central have done so magnificently and beautifully. So I commend all the students that came out tonight. I applaud them for speaking their truth, also thinking about all of the groups that our school serves, with our Black Student Union, our Asian Alliance, our Latinx Alliance communities, and all the other affinity groups in support of their own cultural and other belief systems. So I'm not going to take up much more time, but I applaud the board and expect and hope that we will continue in the path that we have been going with providing safe spaces for the communities in our school that need it, deserve it, and warrant it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Hi, my name is Mandy Small. I'm a Flemington resident. My son is ninth grade here. I was just going to say, I'm glad that this group has an after-school organization. However, my son does not have anything that's like, he was bullied, he actually was, in Reddington Middle School, an HIB investigation was done and he was a victim of bullying. This year, he was called white privilege and the student later, a week later, cut his hand and he got stitches. I didn't do the investigation, I just documented it because it was the first couple incidents. I just noticed when I was looking at the different choices for after-school programs, I didn't see one for Irish students or Native American students or Peruvian students, which my son is of all three. I just don't understand why we're doing so many divisive after-school groups. I would prefer that you guys have like a group after school for bullying. How about an anti-bullying group of just anybody, instead of separating them into different categories and labeling everybody?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Terry Beck. I represent one of the constitutional law groups in the country and I'm here just to let everybody know and give you a heads up. I understand freedom and I understand being yourself and being accepted, feeling great about yourself. However, there are constitutional laws. There's a state statute, New Jersey statute 2C, sections 23 through 4, all about child coercion, grooming, any kind of sexual acts, any kind of intent on an act. That all of a sudden, that will drop. The way I found myself when I grew up is the way everybody could find yourselves. You don't have to do it in a school. The wrong place, wrong time. It's in the law. And now that, because of the New Jersey statute 2C, 24 through 4, is in violation, now it rolls up to the constitutional lawyers who plan on taking down all, their cease and desist letters will be sent out. I'm just giving, I'm here to give everybody a warning. It's under federal statute Title 18, sections 2251 and 2252, which incorporates the whole entire grooming, the transgender from the childhood, birth, all the way up through high school. Basically, you know how I feel. They did it at a young age, which was very inappropriate, stepping over boundaries of parental rights, and guess what happened? It resulted in high school and now this is the end result. It should be nice and would be much better, appropriate, teaching all these kids how to get a mortgage, how to get a bank account, what do you do when you have a boss that's really, really on your nerves? How do you handle, so how do you handle interaction with life? I mean, I accept everybody for themselves, they should love themselves. You don't have to have it in a school. And, and the thing is, which the constitutional lawyers are going to be very upset because now they see, I, I have private emails and transparency, that is a big, big violation in constitutional law and I have to report everything back now. I, I live in Hillsborough, New Jersey. I actually filed charges on Murphy. We are now taking it up step higher. We have three lawsuits and there's another lawsuit against him for hindering businesses with false allegations about all the, there's no other stuff, there's no other reason why we should have been shut out to begin with. There's no, I could go on and on and on, but that's just the way I feel. So take it for what it's worth. I just want to let you all know, the heads up, there's cease and desist letters going to be established. I saw the draft the other night.
Thank you. All right, folks, bear with us, we've only got a couple more speakers.
I may be clairdeeped, I promise to keep it short. My name is Reverend Rivers Harris. I am the, the co-chair for the Moms of Black Boys United of New Jersey. And let me say just first of all, I'd like to preface this, but you guys have a spectacular group of kids in this school. Their courage is amazing. Moms of Black Boys United is a collective of over 180,000 mom leaders from around the country. And they joined together in the interest of supporting our black sons who are perceived and treated differently in society and by law enforcement. We offer support to the board's efforts to enact the State of New Jersey's Youth Bias Task Force, Recommendations for Change. This plan helps educational systems to be better prepared to manage the social, the emotional, the cultural, and the academic needs of black boys. MOP United New Jersey extends its commitment to be available as a resource and a supportive partner to the Hundred and Central BOE. We thank you for your commitment and your faithful service, especially those of you who are rotating off of this board, to the betterment of all of our kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you Reverend Harris.
Good evening, my name is Peter Mantel. I live in Frenchtown and in the interest of full disclosure, I am the United Methodist pastor of Frenchtown in Kingwood. I stand here tonight in solidarity with Pulse. I stand here in solidarity with the LGBTQ youth of this school and of this county and of this world. Just days ago, LGBTQ persons were executed in a nightclub in Colorado. And now there are people coming to this microphone trying to claim that the LGBTQ youth are responsible for the evils of the world. I stand in solidarity with the LGBTQ youth. I tell them in no uncertain terms that they are beloved, they are worthy of God's love, they are affirmed in their humanity, and this school, I applaud you for doing the same. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jim Vargas and I am a Respect for Life Director at St. Maglin's Parish over here in Flemington. We have about 3,500 families in our parish, many of them who will come here now, who will be coming here through K-28 or who attended the school. And right to life is much broader than just the issues around abortion. I've been working with the diversity, equity, and inclusion issues and the new sex standards across the state with several boards, with the legislatures, and several organizations. And I want to, glad you brought out the thing that you talked to me for, what is education? What is indoctrination? Recently, I saw an article in Princeton. Reverend Witherspoon, who was one of the presidents of Princeton, who signed the Declaration of Independence, has a statue there. That statue is going to be removed. People contested it and people said to them, well, his good is still be there, but then we will have to deal with the fact that the old slavery moved the statue. I recently come back from a trip to Hungary. And if you know anything about the reason, the region, it's been through a lot. But you go to Hungary, you look and you'll see a Roman ruin that's 1,000 years old. You'll see their time when they were part of the Ottoman Empire. You'll see the time when they were part of royalty, when they went through World War I and World War II, when they were part of the communist bloc, and what they do today. You see that in that country. A country that looks back at their past 1,000 years, understands it and sends it forward is education. A country that blots out its past and hides it and lets it go for a turn is indoctrination. And we've seen that wide and wide. We've seen state boards of education by Intuit. Back when the affordable, when Obamacare was filed, the government put through video that said how great it was. And I was fine that they did that. But there was a lot done that was around there. There was argument, the head of, the Speaker of the House said, the law wasn't passed, you have to pass it before you see it. There was no talk, and my, my son was a senior here, there was no talk about the trauma that was going around, the people that, that, they just went through it. That is indoctrination. The final thing, I'm going, moving into the new sexual standards and diversity and equity, and since we're running out of time, I'll deal with the last one. In diversity and equity, we said we want everybody welcome and everybody feel comfortable. Well, that's great, except parents. In that law, it says, a child, any age, can declare what pronoun they are and you have to accept it, but a parent does not have to be included. That is really ridiculous. And when you turn that, when you watch what's going on now, when you have things like putting aside history and denying including the parents, that is really indoctrination. Clearly more, I see as much indoctrination I do education going on, I think you need to stop it. And I know I'm getting to the end, but I want to find thing, I found, one thing disturbing about the board. I deal with life issues and I go through things where I have to deal with people that don't agree with me. Having said that, I have no time for somebody, it's just unacceptable from a board of directors who represents us all. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Hi. I don't see a pen here. Oh, I've got one. So I didn't make it up here because I really didn't want to stand up the whole time. So let me write my name. My name is Tamara McAllister and I live in Reddington Township. I'll write it down right here. What I want to really say is pretty simple. I've lived in a few different places. I've lived in, I grew up in Bozeman, Montana, I, which at that point was known as a Hick Farm community, just in case you're thinking it's Montana. And I lived in Kuala Lumpur, I lived in Jersey City, and I lived in Fanwood, New Jersey, and now I live here. It's very, very important to me that I live in a community that believes in equality, that believes in equity, that sincerely cares about bringing out the best in each child. I believe it's very good that this particular high school works with higher-order thinking skills for its children, not just grabbing one side or grabbing another side, but higher-order thinking skills, because that's preparing our children for the future. So as long as children in this community can be accepted for who they are as they're being educated, they will do better in the world, not just here in this little community, but in the whole world. And I- And I thank you so much for supporting all of our students.
Hi, my name is Dakota Artie. I'm a former alumni of Hunterdon Central. During my time at Central, I was only here for two years. Before that, I spent two years at a smaller high school in Spotswood. And I got to say, it was two drastic differences between the schools. At one point, I hated Spotswood High School so much because everyone knew my business and I was told to be a certain way. But when I heard that we were moving and I saw that Central was such a big school, I was excited. I was thrilled. I thought, no one is going to tell me what I need to do, what is, I have to be. But unfortunately, when I got here, that was drawn and I had to conform. I was afraid of who I was and that is because of my beliefs and how I feel. Being a, I tend to lean conservative. I know that's going to sound bad to some people, but that was not my problem. And I know certain people have problems with that, but realistically, all I'm asking for from this board and from this school is that we can come together regardless of whatever your ideas are, whatever your personal beliefs, because the truth is that we are all people and that we need to come together to be able to discuss our issues, discuss our beliefs, and share that. But it just feels that everything that has happened in this room has been so divided and as soon as you hear one idea, it is thrown out the window because it's not what you believe. And it's, the truth of the matter of fact is, not everyone's going to believe what you believe and that's just what it is. I think that we just need to go back to the basics, teach what needs to be taught in school, math, science, history, all that stuff. We cannot force what is going on in the media and all that stuff. So the truth of the matter of fact is, we just need to go back to being people and hearing one each other out. That's all I have to say.
Okay, so that will conclude our second residence forum. I want to thank everyone for being respectful of the speakers and for staying within the time limits, allowing everybody to speak, and particularly being respectful of our students. Do we have any board comments? Okay, we're going to move into executive session to discuss HIV personnel with no action upon our return. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Yep. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, thank you. Hearing none. Can I have a roll call? If you want.
Mrs. Bloodfield? Yes. Dr. Charney?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.